Okay. First off, I want to thank the planning commission for joining us tonight. It's great to have us all in the same room. I don't think we've had a meeting in over a year with the planning commission. But I appreciate everybody making time tonight. This is pretty important issues, obviously, that we're going to be talking about. So that said, I'm going to open up the Escata City Council Planning Commission and Joint Workshop. And who would you like to start the?
Yes, I'll go ahead and start and just say thank you, everybody for taking time this evening to come to this workshop and work together on the topics that are on the agenda. We are a little cramped in here trying to get all of you in a circle. And so appreciate your understanding with that. And I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Taylor Campy, our Community Development Director, and Peter Watts, our City Attorney, and they'll just kind of give you an overview and get us going for this evening.
Thank you. Yeah, good to see you all. So I'm just going to open us up with orienting around the objective of this meeting and kind of what to expect as we move through these topics. So the main primary purpose of coming all together today is to get direction from you all on especially and at least the most pressing code issues. And those are all on the list that you have in front of you and in your packet. And so the three biggest issues that I think we'll want to talk about today are changing the code to conform to legal requirements. And we're going to try to allot about 30 minutes to that conversation if possible. The second one being some really basic childcare amendments. And then the third one being, and for childcare, I think we can probably keep that to 20 minutes. We'll see. The third one being some required airport zone and policy changes. And then, as you have probably seen, there's a long list of other things we could talk about too. So we'll get to what we get to. And then I wanted to just kind of remind and orient around the role of staff and the role of officials in the conversation. We are here to provide relevant information as we are able to. We've tried to prepare as much as we thought was relevant for your information. Talking about these topics, I'm sure there's going to be questions that we're not quite prepared to answer, but we'll come back to you with whatever info we can. We're going to try to help bring people to consensus if possible. And if not possible, try to identify like, what are the concerns, disagreements, preferences that we need to work out and just identify in order to reach some kind of decision or direction for us to take. And then yeah, so that's the role of staff. And then the role of you all, we're really just hoping you will articulate your questions, your preferences, your concerns. It is most helpful if you do that one at a time so that A, we can capture those preferences, questions, concerns, and B, the rest of the group has a chance to, you know, engage with whatever that that point of yours is. So ideally, keep it to one point at a time if possible, and then just so that everything can get addressed and honored. And then the other thing, it's a big group. You guys are going to have a lot of thoughts, probably, hopefully. So we're hoping, if possible, you know, write down your questions, your ideas, your preferences. That way, if we don't get to them all, please follow up with sending those to us so that we can make sure that we're aware. And I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter.
Right. So I I took a look at some of the sections of your development code and there are some sections that were written in the seventies, I think. And there's some sections that were written in the eighties and the nineties. And Taylor and I had a pretty candid conversation about whether we thought this is something that we could deal with kind of on a piecemeal basis as things came up. And I felt like we probably couldn't. There are portions of it that we need to basically conform with state law. So state statutes have changed since the seventies, state administrative rules. We want to make sure that your code aligns with those to the extent that we can have definitions that are the same in all those categories. We want them to be the same. The reason for that is we we need to have clear and objective standards. And the goal is that someone could be reading our code who's never been to Escata and could submit subdivision or application to Taylor and have met all of our requirements. That's kind of the what we try and go for. There are areas where that's not always possible, and we recognize that. But we really need to make sure we're in line with state law. And then the other thing that I suggested is that we kind of ground truth these. So I think some of these zones and Melanie and I actually recently dealt with this. I think the intent of the council was to have commercial on the ground floor in some of these zones. But the way it's written is you're allowed commercial by right. And then there's a lot of other stuff that's allowed. And so the question then becomes things like, how much of it needs to be commercial? And is a vending machine commercial? And then when you look up at vending machine, it could mean food cart. So it's just again, making sure that the code really reflects the intent of you guys, your vision and values and how you want the city to develop and also that it be clear to people that are thinking of purchasing a property, this is what we can do. Here are the requirements. Here's how I can meet those objectives. And so hopefully to minimize staff time, planning commission time, and city council time. So you're not having to constantly come in and interpret some of these terms so that they're clear to people on their face. The other thing that I've said to other jurisdictions and suggest that they can consider, and I would suggest that you do the same. Is there there certain developments that people are entitled to because of state statutes or administrative rules? So you guys can't say no. I mean, if they meet the clear and objective criteria, the answer has to be yes. So given how, and we haven't gotten here yet in Escata, but I think we could, given how contentious those issues are and how the public oftentimes can't understand why aren't they listening to me? You know, I feel very strongly about this, and yet you guys are deciding something on clear and objective criteria. So if you're not legally able to say no, then is it fair to make the planning commission city council say yes? Because, you know, educating people on they're entitled to this by right. So like, if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, even if someone's view, they don't want it to be of another house, they kind of like the, you know, the grass, they're entitled to build it. So does that, should that really go to the planning commissioner, the city council, when at the end of the day after this hearing, you have no choice but to say yes to the people? So that's another thing that that I would encourage. So it's making sure that our definitions are consistent, making sure they comply with state law, making sure that we ground truth them. So it's your vision and values. And then just you directing us. And again, this has to be within what we can do. But how can we make all that happen? So you guys get the sort of development you want. Those would be the goals of that. There are other code sections of yours that probably makes sense to go through in the future. But given the attorney's fees that developers can get, if you guys get to the wrong answer, I really think we need to, my advice to staff and my advice to you is to focus on those sections of the development code, just so we have as much protection as possible. And also so you guys know I can say no to this, or I can impose these conditions. Or on this one, I have to say yes. And so again, I hope that this conversation, because if you guys don't agree with the vision and values, you're not going to adopt it and will have wasted a ton of time. And so I really want this to reflect your needs and the community needs. Again, we were preempted by some state laws, but but we do have some flexibility.
So I think before, yeah, I'll maybe pause and ask for questions. Comments?
I just want to check in here. You'd said some are written in the seventies and eighties. How often should we be looking at these? So at some point, we're not going back and saying these were written in the 2020s.
Well, when the, when the, if you fall under a state mandate, like House Bill 2001 is one that came out a couple of years ago. And I think we're still under the population limit. But when the legislature says you have to do this, like at that point, you have to do it. And hopefully we can get some grant funds from DLCD to do it. Otherwise, I think every five years, because again, as the community evolves, community goals will evolve with them. And it's just making sure. And then the other thing is, we might think we've gotten the zoning right. But if it's some giant parcel and it hasn't developed in however long, you know, maybe we need to revisit that and check in with some different developers and say, why hasn't this developed? And then do we want to make some changes so it can? So those are the kind of instances where I would suggest.
How much of that zoning change is regulated by the land inventories that are required for the comp plan? Because I know that, like, your example there out on the highway of Veterans Way, changing the front half to commercial was a big lift. And most of these faces weren't in this room when we talked about it. Melanie was. Mary Drinkwine was. But it was, as DLCD said, it was putting a thumb in their eye by changing that zoning. Is it similar now? Or is it widening up?
So I'm seeing more flex to be, flexibility out of DLCD, except with the UGV swap, where suddenly they become inflexible. But I think that, one, we're starting to see housing as part of commercial. And so if your commercial code allows housing on like a second or a third floor, then they're going to, you're going to see a lot less opposition than you had. And then I think that the other thing is there's been a huge amount of staff turnover at that agency in the past, even three, just since the beginning of the pandemic. So I think they're trying to be more responsive because they've realized some of these ultra-prescriptive things hinder development. Unless you want to do a UGV swap. I don't recommend.
I think you're good to go.
So yeah, I'm, I guess we're looking for if there aren't any other questions at the tops of people's minds, kind of a consensus. Can we go with a nod? Do they have to? It's a workshop. I guess they can't do decisions, but.
I think there could be consensus. If somebody is strongly opposed, then, and it feels like there's a consensus happening, then maybe just raise your hand and we'll let you speak that you're not in favor or something. But.
Right. Yeah. So we're looking for direction that this is some.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what the consensus is. And that's to be that we're going to have Peter, I guess, in, basically our planning commission, everything to go over all of the codes that you've identified as being old and not in line with state law. And then bring them up to code and bring the recommendations for those codes to the council to approve. Is that roughly what you're saying?
Yeah. And just making sure that, you know, people have a certain idea of what a vending machine is, and it's not a food cart. And so if if we want to say food cart, we're making sure we're saying food cart. If we want a vending machine like a Coke machine, we're saying vending machine. And just that it means the same thing in every section. So again, that.
I guess I'm confused in the process you're wanting to go through. That's not being clarified. So what's the process you're talking about going through?
Yeah. So.
Reviewing your code to see if it's clear and objective standards.
Okay. So let me, let me rephrase what I'm trying to ask. Are you going to review a section, bring it to the planning commission? They're going to put their input. Then it's going to come to the council, we're going to put our input, then it's going to go back for approval and change.
Part of this, yeah, part of the process is going to be planning out, you know, building the work plan of the process. So what I would propose, since you know, this would allow it to come before the council for an official consensus and motion if needed, is we could put together that work plan, get it in front of the, now that it sounds like everyone agrees that this is something the city should work on addressing, put together more of a work plan, right? What are the, what are the steps in the process that we know need to be part of the process? And then things that we recommend, including that maybe might seem like extra or something like that, get it in front of you guys and hear some more specific feedback on that work plan.
And we'll want to do some temperature checks too, because the last thing I would want is to go down the, we're going to ask a lot of the planning commission. And I don't want to go down the road if we're going down a road that council's not on board with. So I don't want to like go spend all that time and then show up and council's like, well, that's not what we wanted. So we'll want to make sure we'll want to make sure that everyone's kind of on board and tracking what's going on. So we don't get off course.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Just Title 16, the development code.
And you mentioned earlier, there might be a, some grants we can get for this, because I'm assuming it's going to take a lot of Peter's time, which is going to be a big expense, and then a lot of staff time.
So something that I don't publicize, but you guys should know is that I bill you on a flat fee basis. So we're, you know, we could spend a lot of time on things, and that it has to be fair to me and it has to be fair to you. But what I want of all my cities is that they have certainty. So that they know their legal expenses are going to be X amount per month. So and and I'm sure, given the amount of work that I've been doing as compared to historically, you know, that's a conversation that I'll have with staff, but that's something that you guys need to know. And please like be responsible with how much of my time you take, because I represent other cities too. But I want to make sure that we don't have to come back and do this again in two years. I don't want to do a Band-Aid. I looked at the code. I've been concerned for a while, but I haven't had a lot of capacity. I anticipate having more capacity. Taylor doesn't have any capacity, but I'm going to basically steal her time. And I'm, my plan is just to show up here and actually sit down and go through the code line by line and then bring it into the planning commission. And my goal is not to have to do it again for five to 10 years unless the legislature imposes something on us. So that's kind of how I would force this government, if you guys are okay.
Can we take a less is more approach and get rid of anything that just doesn't make sense and belong?
Yeah, I mean, there, there are going to be things that are like the appendix. It's like your appendix, right? It's just not, no one's sure why it's there, it just is. And so let's, let's get rid of those because what I don't like is for someone to come in. And an example is that mill designation. So you're able to have residential if it's within 200 feet of another residential. It's such an oddly shaped parcel. And I'm looking at it being like, we're going to have fingers of residential and all these things. Instead, maybe we say we're going to do X number of units per net developable acre to the extent that it's residential. So they can do some multifamily on one site. They could do some single family where it makes more sense, maybe around the pond. I don't know. Maybe some commercial. And then, but if we want that to evolve, let's do it so that someone can read the code and know exactly what they can build where. So that, that again, that'll be another one of those goals.
All right. So I think we got a general head nod. So we'll bring something a little more concrete to the council sometime soon. Cool. We are moving right along. The next, so if you are looking in your packet on the first page, there is an updated version of this code issue priorities memo in the extra packet that we put out with a sticky note. And that's just updated. We, we received some additional votes that we updated the numbers, but it's the same list. So moving along into, and yeah, just reminding you that this list is here and we can talk about any of these things that we have time or concerns to talk about tonight. But to address the more pressing priorities here, the childcare facilities issue starts on the next page of your packet. And that memo is called Planning for Childcare in Escata. And we did get a couple of questions ahead of this meeting, which I really reiterate appreciating when we can get those ahead of time, because it allowed us to put some thoughts and points together, which we printed out in that additional packet with the sticky note on it. And so there's a couple of just email exchanges in there that address some of the questions that came up related to childcare. And so I'm going to first, I don't have that in front of me, but I would like to. Can I steal this from you? So I want to first, I'm actually going to pull up the questions from Paul, Councillor Strobel. Just to clarify what it is that we're not, that was, that was not included in the proposal. So this memo is presenting a really basic pared down, we hope it's basic, proposal of development code amendments that will clarify our definitions of the different types of childcare facilities that exist. And then that will allow those types of childcare facilities in the zones that we think make sense based on our preliminary conversation with the planning commission. But that's something that we're looking for input from you all on. And that's the extent of this proposal. So this proposal does not include any of the more like in-depth programmatic policy incentive-y things that were provided in Exhibit One, which was the first memorandum on childcare stuff. So yeah, in the email, in the email exchange with Councillor Strobel, I basically just explained how none of, none of the things that were proposed in that first memo are actually now being proposed right here. The planning commission at our last meeting agreed that just the most basic code amendments are what makes sense to work on right now. All of those other things, I don't want to call them extra things. They're things that the city could work on, but they would take a lot more time. And we're not currently proposing that we work on them right now. That we prioritize those over other things. So that was the first, I think these other questions maybe we'll get to after after looking at the memo. So we tried to organize this memo to be skim-able. We know you're all busy. And so we wanted to, yeah, just, just really kind of simplify the idea here. Our code currently defines childcare daycare in a, in ways that are confusing. It conflicts with itself. It calls it one thing over here, but something else over here. It makes you have to reference this section of the ORS in order to understand what type of facility it's talking about. So we, the first part of this is, let's clean that up, make it really clear what we're talking about when we say daycare or preschool or childcare. So that's the first part of it. And then the second part of it is, our code also currently maybe because of those issues with the definitions, or maybe because of some oversight, we're not sure. But it currently only allows really small childcare facilities. So only up to 12 children technically are allowed outright anywhere in the city. And those places where it's allowed outright are quite limited. There are places where you can have, I think this is correct, you can have more than that as a conditional use in a couple, in only a couple of places.
Oh, yeah, 12 is the maximum.
Okay. Thank you. So scratch that conditional use part. The, the conditional use that I'm thinking of is that there is a there's like a child welfare type facility, like foster services and other, other types of child welfare facilities can be allowed in certain zones. I think it's only in the downtown zone outright, and then in other zones as a conditional use. So there's just really a limited amount of places where you could have a regular daycare, which presumably would have more than more than 12 kids. Also, the number 12 doesn't line up with the state's definition of these different facilities, which the threshold for the state is 16. So we're, we're proposing to reconcile our definitions with those thresholds that are defined by the state. And simplify, if you look in this memo or in the other memo, it gives you a bunch of the different definitions from the state. And I don't think we need to get that complicated with it. I think we can basically have one definition, which is small childcare facilities, 16 kids or fewer. And then another, another definition, which is larger facilities, more than 16 kids. And then that third definition of, you know, child welfare or youth support service type facilities. So that's, those are the basics of the proposal that the planning commission asked us to start drafting at our last meeting. And I'm going to pause there and see what questions there are, or if you want me to speak to the questions, the other questions that came in via email.
I don't see any hands up. So why don't you speak to the other questions that have already come in?
Okay. So one of the questions that came in was, how many childcare providers are in Escata? And looking at our business license information, what we are aware of are 11 within the urban growth boundary. A number of those are in-home providers. At least one, two are in churches. And then one of the in-home providers is retiring this year. And then there's also the Spring Water Preschool, which is outside of the urban growth boundary. So that's 11, sort of 12, but soon to be 11 again. And then there was a question, what fees does the city require of childcare providers? It's just standard business license fee, $85. And then the question, what is the demand in Escata? So this is a difficult question to answer. We do have regional numbers. And so I printed out the, I printed out excerpts. It's a long document. It's a draft report from the Clagamas Clagamas County Childcare for All, CC4A. And I just pulled pages that I thought would be relevant. Otherwise, it would have been 100 pages long. I didn't think you wanted that. So that report talks about a lot of different things, talks about some of the barriers to childcare, talks about the demand. Yeah, Councilwoman Key.
I just wanted to actually take advantage of our school representative over here. Is there any in-school programs that aren't listed on here, obviously, like years after school programs, things like that as well, or before school?
Yeah, thank you for the question. And thanks for allowing me to be a part of this team. It's, it's a pleasure and an honor to be a part of it. So thank you for that. The, the, the things that the school district offers are not listed on here specifically. But we do have multiple opportunities for our families. We partner with a group called Totos Juntos, who offers after-school and before-school daycare and activities. We also partner with the Tiny Timbers, who is a relatively new nonprofit, I believe, who is part of the people who are strong advocates for this code change. And they offer now two pre-K programs, which, which houses about 60 students, four years old and under. And then they also have an after-school program as well. And then we partner with the Ant Farm from Sandy and some other places to do a lot of summer school activities that we still see high demand though on Fridays, as we've changed to our different school schedule to meet the needs of some of our most complex student challenges. And so we know that there's a greater demand that's still out there. But from inside the school walls, we offer quite a bit of opportunities, which, which does serve over 100 kids.
Does the school have any, any data on what the demand is? Anything that's come in? You guys are on your own surveys?
We, we do have the data for any child that's six years kindergarten age and older. I don't have anything, you know, newborn to kindergarten.
Can we do an official request to the school district for those numbers? So we can share them with the council and the planning commission for what their data is on demand for six and older?
Yeah. And the six and older is important because the number of adults for child is dramatically higher for children under the age of six. And then I'd say other communities that have successfully done this, it's been working with the school, whether it's Green and the Y or another after-school service provider, particularly if there's a day of the week where there's more demand. And then the more kids there in it, the more financial flexibility there is for, whether it's campfire, the Y, or whoever. So the school district is absolutely a great partner, kind of get on the same page with. But we can get that information, I bet.
Yeah. Yeah. And yeah, the other, the other thing I would, I wanted to add about the demand. about the demand is really just all of the anecdotal data stories that we've been hearing, inquiries, questions that we have been getting for the past four years or so from childcare providers that come to us or call us asking, do you know of anywhere that I could open this facility with this many kids? Does the zoning allow it? And time after time, we have to say, no, the zoning doesn't allow that there. Or yes, but it would be limited to 12 kids and that doesn't work for them. So yeah, there are, there are things that cities can do. I mean, we could look at, we could look more deeply at what other jurisdictions have done to partner with or support or incentivize something like a Y or some other kind of facility coming into town. But what is currently included in this proposal wouldn't be, wouldn't, wouldn't really be the city doing anything necessarily to support those facilities. It would just be allowing them to open up if some private entity had the means to come in and open up their business. And then the last one on here was are there wait lists that we know of? And yes, I don't have the number, but we, some of our staff have attended some of the Estacada Early Childhood Committee meetings. And they talk often about how several of their providers have wait lists. So we're aware of them. We just don't have the numbers on them, but we could get those.
Nice to know them. It'd be nice to know the length of those lists, too.
Yeah. Length and number. Councilor Wiki?
So I have a couple of questions when it comes down to some of the zone use changes on here. And my, my thought is this one, and this is, you know, maybe some people can give me some insight on what their thoughts are. But I'm thinking about people like putting large childcare facilities in like R1s and stuff, because imagine if you, if you are, maybe you are an elderly couple and you, you know, a lot of noise and input causes problems for you, or maybe you have someone with a, you know, mental illness then, or you have dogs that go crazy or whatever. And then your neighbor wants to put in a facility with 16 or maybe a large facility that can do a lot more kids next door. That might cause some serious problems for your home. Can we put something in? It does say conditional use, but can we put something in where like, maybe it requires at least the neighbors to be there that are immediately adjoining to that to be part of that conditional use? Because it's going to affect them directly. And, you know, I just know that in some cases, that's something we really want to consider because you wouldn't want something going in next to your home that's going to basically greatly diminish your, your life or your reason to want to be there. Because, you know, it's driving you nuts or whatever, make you want to move. We want to consider that as well. So is that something we can write into a code? This is probably for Peter, I think, also to take in this one.
Well, I don't think we could give the neighbors veto authority over it. I mean, if we're, if we're talking about children under the age of six, I think it's one adult for, is it five or is it six children? It's, okay, is it up to seven? Yeah, so we're talking about a lot of supervision from adults. And that also, the state's really prescriptive. So they also mandate a certain amount of square feet per child. And, and that's why the trend we're seeing is in schools. Because schools and churches are really the only facilities that can meet the, between ADA requirements, square footage per child and number of adults per seven children. It's going to be, it would be unlikely that anything other than like one adult supervising seven children would be in an R1. It's likely going to be in a church or a school. But we could, we could, I mean, we could cap the number of children in an R1 zone. It could be they have to be inside. I mean, that, that might not be great for the kids, but it would probably limit noise.
I think there are outdoor place-based requirements for certain types of childcare, too.
Right, yeah.
And I'm not trying to overcomplicate the code. That's going to get kind of complicated there, too, to go into that. I'm just trying to see what we can do to take into consideration. So we don't outright just kind of blow past people that may be in those situations. I just wanted to make sure we're considering that and see what we can put in here to accommodate for them.
Yeah.
Could we just remove the conditional use in R1? I mean, that seems like the simplest, that seems like the simplest solution.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you look at, we're looking at the table on page three of three in, is this the packet, packet? In the proper packet?
The one with the red letters.
The one with the red letters, yep. And so if, if you were to decide to allow all of those, all of those new red As or most of those new red As, that in itself would open up a ton of area where these larger facilities and smaller facilities would be newly allowed. And I think it would be reasonable to, I feel like it wouldn't be quite as necessary to possibly consider allowing it in the R1 zone if you're going to allow it in all those other places. And for the reasons that Councilor Wiki brought up.
My question is sometimes a church is located in R1 zone. I think as, I think it's a conditional use, I'm not sure. But if, if that's the case, and then we don't have a conditional use for the childcare centers in R1, then it would limit maybe a great location, but it wouldn't be allowed. So I just would ask to consider that, too.
Why are we fixated on R1? Does R2 not matter?
Oh, the question was about R1.
Yeah, I mean, R2, what was, I know that was a big thing for what we put in R2. What did we allow with the new housing?
Duplexes, duplexes outright in R1 to get ahead of the state bill that would be triggered with the population growth in Estacada.
Is that on R2?
That was R1 duplexes and ADUs. And then R2 was duplexes, triplexes, no quadplexes. Okay, so changes.
Very good. Good memory.
So am I reading this table correct, Taylor? That small childcare facilities with the current definition are currently allowed in R1, two and three. It would just be increasing the allowable capacity.
Yes, right, because there should be a little asterisk there. Currently, it's only up to 12. And we're proposing to change the definition to clarify that it's up to this, the 16 threshold, which is the state's current.
Do you know what the square foot per child is?
I don't know off the top of my head. Now, I mean.
I think they don't stipulate like a minimum square footage until you get into childcare facilities that are center-based. So these would all be like the small childcare facilities would be home-based.
Yeah, I was just curious. I thought Peter had mentioned that there was a square foot that would restrict the amount of kids that would be in the residential.
I've only seen that for centers, but maybe Peter has more to say about that.
I mean, it came up because we were, I was in Scapus and we were trying to locate one. And I had not realized how extensive the childcare state regulations were until we were, we were starting to game out.
Got it. For 12 or fewer, it's one child per 35 square feet.
My question on like Red Barn, for instance, next to Clagmas County Elementary. I'm assuming that's R1 down there on Pierce Street. I don't know how many kids go there, but it's a bona fide preschool.
And that's the one that's shutting down, from what I understand. They're retiring that facility.
So that's two, then.
And if it's 35 per square foot, that would make 420 square feet minimum on 12 kids per, yes, 420. It's pretty small.
I'm just wondering if we're splitting hairs here by eliminating R1. The vast majority of our residential code is R1. And of the places that I know on here, most of them reside in R1. And so if we make it a conditional use for them to go to a larger facility like Red Barn or the Clagmas County one that's up here on, whatever it says Maine, are we creating a code issue by putting some arbitrary rule that they can't be allowed? Or is this a systemic issue that we have people complaining about happy kids out and outside? Being slightly facetious.
It's hard to say. I haven't received any complaints about happy kids.
Why?
But yeah.
It kind of goes back to the whole thing of like keeping things simpler and less is more like, let's not add a bunch of stuff in there unless it's actually a problem. And then maybe address the problem rather than make a blanket statement.
Like for, for instance, the Red Barn being in the R1 zone, that seems like an ideal location and probably would be fairly easily approved with a conditional use. If you moved into a tighter neighborhood where it's just in a house that doesn't have that big of a yard and has really close neighbors and wasn't designed for that, then can the, can it be denied? If it doesn't seem to be a good fit for the neighborhood? Or is it, are they?
Yeah, conditional use applications, the decision process for those is allowed to be subjective. There's subjectivity kind of baked into that decision. And the, the code directs you to how you're supposed to be subjective. And one of those is considering the character and the impacts on the surrounding neighborhood.
So sometimes you may want to allow it and other times you might want to be able to say no, and hence a conditional use for that. And then R1 and R2, like the schools are in R1 zones. There's churches in R1 and in R2. And so it seems to be a good fit, but I might be missing part of that.
Yeah.
Maybe a different approach to this.
So the, kind of what we're, yeah, what we're looking at here is sort of just the, do we want to get started on this? And I feel like we're starting to get into some specifics of what we would end up hashing out if we move forward with some of these changes. So we can, we're doing pretty well on time. So we can get into some of these details if you want.
I'm thinking it's better than planning commission having to make recommendations, send up to council, council making recommendations, go back and forth and spend six months on it. You can just try and hash it out now. I'm going to get it down here and figure out these details. But I think Ben's got to point to a little bit. It, it might be split hairs a few areas if we have a conditional use on it. But my question would come down to Peter is, let's say we, they gave a conditional use to allow a, to allow a childcare facility inside of a R1 zone or whatever else, or R2, doesn't matter. And then found out that there's a major, it's causing major disruption to local residents. Is the city within its right to revert that change? To revert that approval and tell them they can't longer have it because it's caused some disruption?
Unless it's a health or safety issue once we've granted the conditional use, they get it. And they, as long as they maintain it, then they get to keep it. So for a 16 child facility with the 35 square feet, they would have to have a room with 560 square feet. Because you're not, you don't get to stick a couple of kids in a bedroom and a couple of kids. I mean, they all need to be in the thing. So we're, if we're talking about houses that could accommodate that in an R1, it's going, it's probably going to be a pretty limited number of houses. You also have to have facilities to feed the kids. You have to have bathrooms. You have to have all these requirements. So it's, if someone wants to watch five kids in their house, yeah, that can probably happen. But if they're actually going to have something that you think of as a facility, they're going to be pretty limited in how many properties they can use in an R1 zone. And then I would say as far as noise complaints, I mean, I wish we never got it. I wish I never had experienced that. But the, the two, the two things are basketball and pickleball. So if the kids aren't dribbling a basketball outside, I don't know why that upsets people. It doesn't upset me, but it upsets a lot of people. And so basketball and pickleball both record over the number of decibels that would trigger a noise complaint. And noise complaints seem frequent. I've, we've never, I've not seen one with like laughter of small children. I mean, that would be pretty, I don't know if that, I don't know if someone could even, you know, do a straight face on that. But I shouldn't joke about it because then we get, well.
Right.
I, I feel like I've asked a question that I feel like we needed to at least be asking on that. So I don't have any more concerns.
I don't really have, I don't really have a question. I just, I, I like this, the changes to the code when I additionally, when I read them at first. And I'm very comfortable moving forward with, with this, so.
Any other expressions of agreement or potential concerns? Questions? I, I think these are great and in agreement, I guess, just to follow up to what, oops, what Joel was asking about, including people in the conversation. Would we, with a conditional use thing, would there be the same notification to the neighbors in 200 feet as there is for other planning commission stuff? Yep. Okay, so they would have the opportunity, if they were really upset about it, then to come and at least speak their piece. Yep, definitely. And if we move forward with these amendments, the whole city will also be notified about, I mean, we don't notify every, I don't think we have to notify every individual property by mail. But there would be the public notice procedure for these code amendments themselves, too. And we would reach out to like childcare-related agencies and try to get the word out for any and all public input on that, too.
And practically speaking, and again, this is just what we're seeing on the ground. One of the most important things is proximity to schools. So you don't want to have to put kids in a van or a bus. You want them to either stay in the school or be able to like be next door to the school. And so those neighbors, you know, when you move next to a school, you, you know that your kids are going to have a short walk and you're probably going to get some playground noise. So I, I think that if, if, even if the kids are having to walk blocks, it's going to make it less attractive to their parents. And it's going to make it less likely that a facility would get located there.
Like I said, I was asking a question because I felt we owed it to Dejounte, at least ask the questions. I think there's been some good answers to it, so I can support what's on here.
Great, and I'm glad that you brought that up, Tara, because I reminded myself on page two of this memo. One of the other questions that we have for you guys is, so we have to do the standard public noticing for any kind of code amendment. We try to, we try to go a little bit above and beyond on that. You know, post it on, we'll post things on the city's Facebook and stuff like that, which isn't technically required. But so we want to know from your standpoint, do you want us to go further beyond? Do you want us to hold any kind of, certain kind of public input? Is there, are there specific questions that you want to make sure to ask the community before we package this all up? I want your input about public input. What was that?
I think public input's always a great idea. So, I mean, I'm never going to pay note of that.
Is, so is that something that you would, I guess we can talk more specifics, but would it be like, would we put something on the council's agenda where it's kind of, where it's council listening session? We could give a really basic overview of this preliminary proposal? And then, yeah, people could come and speak their mind or submit written testimony for the council to consider?
Could do that. In Wilsonville, they did a pretty thorough survey that was sent out. And I'm not sure of the details on that, but I was talking to someone who was involved with it and they got a lot of good feedback. So we, so if we want to do just a survey that outreach is, and we could do that, or if you'd rather do a listening session, just depends on what, how you'd like to, how much you'd like to be involved versus.
Could send it out with the water bill and it's no additional cost to get that survey information back?
I, I could go either way on that, but I would think the listening session might require less, less effort and be, allow more voices, you know, whoever might come in, especially if we did it during a council meeting itself as well, too. I'm, I'm good with the listening session.
There are, excuse me, Paul. There are some people, though, that will not stand up in front of a room and, and say anything. So maybe a combination of the two might be best.
Right, like at our land use public hearings, we take written testimony and people can come up and speak, yeah?
Or could we just do a, have a survey out with the water bill and then have a listening session? Because if people just want to fill out a survey, then we can have the combination of those two.
Yeah.
I'd be kind of curious if one of those questions on there is, do you have a need for healthcare? See if we can get some sort of numbers back, too. I mean, if we're going to do that, too, they'll have to, people don't really get back on the water bill stuff. Might as well throw a, if we're going to be waiting for numbers to come back, throw up a poll or a survey on Facebook or something through the city website.
Yeah, we can easily make a form that comes in.
I'm just kind of curious to see what our actual need is. I mean, we have the, we have the school numbers, but I mean, if we can get some, some numbers, maybe either help validate or maybe it might even support the school in some areas, too. We can, you know, have kind of a exchange there.
Yeah. Yeah, great ideas. Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns before we move on?
Oh, yeah, just one quick question. So we're just talking about just these, this thing right here, nothing else. I saw in the packet that talked about like SDCs and everything else. We're not.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, correct. Yeah, that's, that was what that, one of those extra email printouts was addressing, was, you know, the questions were basically, oh, I saw, I saw all these other things in Exhibit One, which Exhibit One was the, that previous, like first super preliminary memo of, here's all the possible things that cities could do to address or support childcare. And a bunch of them are related to, you know, reducing development standards like parking or other standards, right? We're not proposing any changes like that. We're not proposing any incentives or STC-related changes or anything.
One more thing I wanted to. Um, one more thing I wanted to throw out there as well, since we're kind of making these changes is. Um, I'd be willing to support waiving the, uh, the, the cost of the, um, business license for childcare facilities as well. So at least until we, we feel like the, the need, if there, if the need identified is there. And we felt like we met the need, then we can look up adding it back in, but. Small, it might help support smaller childcare facilities coming in and registering as well.
Yeah, and I should have added, we do already waive that fee for, um, nonprofits. So some of those facilities are going to be nonprofits that don't have to pay the fee anyway, but they do have to be registered with the city. Um, but yeah, we can add that, add that in. Okay. Great, moving right along to, um. The last item on our top kind of. More urgent code needs is the airport plan and land use regulations. And so that starts a little ways in to your packet.
Can we back up to the, the proposal? I think it's a good proposal, um, but Council Lick had mentioned till we get things, um. You know, maybe stabilized or something like that. What, what would be a measurement? What would be, how would we know when the moratorium is over?
Sorry, which more?
On waiving the fee, the wave in the childcare fee. It was a temporary proposal. Do we, do we set it up for two years? I, I guess I'd like to have an end date or something like that or know what.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
I think two year period is a great idea. I don't know if we have to extend it, we can extend it, you know, I mean.
Okay, that'd be, I'm good with that.
After meeting some, either for two years or after meeting some like identified, we did it success. Um, okay. So I'm sorry, we didn't put page numbers on all of the packet pages. I apologize for that. Um. The airport, what you're looking for is the memo. It comes right after the big childcare maps. And so it's the memo called Airport Plan and Land Use Regulations. And I am going to try to just summarize this. My brain has spent way too much time thinking about this. Um, basically, the state has a requirement, it's in the Oregon revised, no. The Oregon Administrative Rule six, six, zero dash, zero, one, three, and the requirement is. If your jurisdiction has an airport within your urban growth boundary. Um, not within your city limits, but within the urban growth boundary, it's within your planning authority. Um, then you are required to adopt airport-related policies and airport-related land use regulations, so development code, zoning code. Um, to govern development and uses around that airport. And so usually airports are outside of urban growth boundaries, so it is unique and kind of weird that. This airport actually has two jurisdictions that have planning authority over it, Clackamas County, which is currently. Who has jurisdiction over the airport because it's outside of city limits. Um, so Clackamas County has a responsibility to have their policies and regulations. For the airport and then we also have that responsibility because it's within our urban growth boundary. We didn't realize that until about a year, a little more than a year ago, when we had a land use application come in for a property that was. Adjacent to the airport property, but separate from it, but for some reason it was still designated on our comp plan map. For airport to be zoned airport when it comes into city limits. The problem with that is that we don't have an airport, an actual airport zone to match that comp plan map designation. So when it comes into city limits, we have no zoning to apply to it. So that's bad. Um, and it put us in a real pickle because. Well, it could have, could have put us in a worse pickle because if they wanted to stay zoned airport, we wouldn't have had then anything. To zone that property. Um, but fortunately, and what I think makes sense, all of the other properties around there are. R one low density residential. We agreed, yeah, that makes sense, rezone to R one, that's what they wanted to do anyway. So we, you know, moved forward, this all makes sense to us. We're going to rezone it according to the surrounding area, according to what the developer wants to do. Um, and we got contacted by the Department of Aviation. Coming in and saying, you're not allowed to do that. Where's your airport plan? Where are your policies? Where's your regulations? And we learned that, um, technically, if we have not adopted. An airport plan, which is just policies in your, in your comprehensive plan, an airport plan and land use regulation, so that's the zoning code. If we have not adopted that for an airport that we have planning authority over, um, we are not. Allowed, we're not supposed to, um, approve zone changes or annexations or, or we're not supposed to. Approve land use decisions for a property that is. Within that airport boundary or within that airport designation. Luckily, no one challenged it, but it could have been messy if it had been challenged. So, um. We need to fix that and I think it could be pretty straightforward. Um, the county, like I said, they have already adopted policies and an airport plan for that airport. And they have adopted an overlay with land use regulations for that airport. And so what we would like to do is. Copy what the county has for the exact same airport, right? They've already adopted something that is appropriate to the airport. Um, unless you all see a reason to adopt something different, we could just apply the same policies and regulations to the same airport. Um, and just kind of cross our Ts and dot our Is.
And this only came up because, so we did not have to have a plan or any of the zoning until they contracted with the state. Um, for the airport to become a staging area. It, which is completely outside of our control and we hadn't received notice. So with the filing of a sheet of paper. Suddenly a whole new regulatory scheme came into play that we were then subject to. And so we made some phone calls. I made some phone calls and then we, we got to, uh, we got to a good. We got to a relatively good spot, um, but with assurances that we come in and fix. Fix this. And, and again, if we just, I mean, my, I told them my interpretation was that we meant the county zoning. Cause what else could it be? Cause we said airport and they said airport and. They couldn't, the state couldn't prove a negative. So, um, that was enough to last, uh, fourteen months. Cause it was January last year, anyway. Um, but yeah, we, it would be great if we could adopt that. We reviewed the county's plan. It seems reasonable. The state regulations do, do do things like how part do you need to be. So they saw like they're going to get houses built at the end of the runway, but, um, the county's plan's up to date and it's, it's well drafted.
Yeah. Yeah, so what we're proposing is to. If everyone agrees, copy what the county's already got. Let's not reinvent the wheel, um, make any changes that. The council wants to make, um. One change to consider, and so I think. The biggest question in my mind is, um, do we want it to be an overlay, which is what the county has? The county has that area zoned their version, basically their version of low density residential. And then if an airport exists, the overlay automatically gets applied. And so we could do the same thing so that in the future, if that airport closes and the city doesn't. Feel the need for there to be another airport that opens there, um, you could actually just zone it. Low density residential, like the surrounding area or something, whatever you want to zone it, um, and have that overlay. Get, you know, basically the over, the overlay applies if an airport exists there. So that's what the county has. If you don't want to do the overlay option, you can keep it how we currently have it. Sort of, which is, we have the actual comprehensive plan designation. So that says. This land is, the city wants this land to be an airport. And so if the current airport users want to close the airport, but the city wants there to be another airport there for the future. Um, then that comp plan designation and actual zone will make sure that. Other types of uses aren't allowed to get developed there because you want it to stay in airport. So I think that's the biggest, that's probably the primary question, but maybe you guys have other concerns and thoughts about all that.
Commission probably has, you know, the best place right here, I think, is a recommendation. What do you think? And in the group as a whole.
Does the county plan follow what the state wants?
Um, the county plan followed what the state wanted back in, I think it was two thousand, I have the number two thousand six. Oh, two thousand and one, okay. Yeah, so we would, we would want to. Check with the Department of Aviation and DLCD and just say, hey, we're looking at adopting the same thing the county has. Have there been any updates to the requirements since then? And we would need to meet those. But otherwise, yeah, they, they did it in compliance with the state requirements at that time and federal requirements, of course, applied to.
Um, I'm wondering what, what staging area means in that, um, designation and I guess. You know, in thinking about whether we want this to be an airport for the future. Or whether we want it left up to whatever the next owner wants to do with it. Well, one question I have is, is in staging area, do you mean for things like fires? Is, is this airport used for, um, staging any kind of, uh. Helicopter or small plane takeoff for firefighting? Cause to me that would be a, a big reason why we might want to keep it an airport.
Yeah, I think I recall that that was one of the uses that was involved in that. Um, what happened was they entered into this, they got a grant from the state. And one of the requirements to like repave the runway or do some improvements. Um, but one of the requirements of the grant was that they had to open their airport to be not just private use, but now it's public use. And it's a, I think the name is like public use utility airport. And so that. Use is included in utility airport. I think there are probably some other, I don't know what else is for. Included in like a public use utility airport. It's privately owned, but public use for utility purposes, whatever that entails. So, yeah, we could look more into that though. But yes, I think emergency. I recall something about emergency.
Like if there were, it's not just fires, if there was an earthquake or, I mean, it would take a huge tsunami to get here, but. You know, any of, any of those sort of things, they would then be able to use it as staging. In part, the idea is there's enough space around it so they could fly things in and out without worrying about structures.
I think Tara had the right idea there being, eh, eh, something we keep open, even if it wasn't registered as a staging area, you know, things. Need to get happened, even if it's not planned that way. So I think having it as a airport. Consistently is probably a good idea, just for future planning. And, you know, once it's gone, it's hard to get back. Second question is, if, um. As we're developing this out, do cities, uh, is the airport, would that be, since it's a public piece? Would there ever be a cost to the city or a, uh, opportunity for us to get a grant of funding from state or federal because we have a airport there or anything?
Probably, um, yeah, I don't know enough about aviation-related grants, but I wouldn't be surprised if there were. Even if it's not, I mean, cities can get grants to support private development if they serve some public good too, so. Um, it is currently a private air, privately owned airport, just public utility use. Um, but I'm sure there are grants related to, like if it is to remain a public use airport, I'm sure there are public. Grants that would be available. Yeah. I think Tom.
Okay. When we started doing, discussing this back. Couple of months ago. We, we directed, uh, I kind of directed it to find. The proof that there is already is agreement through this. Or that stated it, Oregon, and then the state picked it, helped pick it up somehow. I, you know, Richard Harwood was on it, but he's of course not here. So he can't give me all the details, but so are, are we going to, can we approve this? While we know there's some agreement out there that no one can find.
I asked Tracy, so what Tom's referring to is they were pretty sure that the city already adopted. You have a memory of adopting.
I wish I could find it, but.
A zone, an airport zone.
Yeah.
And told us to check with Tracy and Tracy does not believe that happened, but you would have been involved in the. The adoption of the comprehensive plan map designation. And you probably also would have been involved in the adoption of the county's. Um, overlay, which is within our urban growth boundary. So I'm. We could do some more digging on, on all that, but yeah, I, we did not find any zone adopted there.
So the, the whole concept of what's called an UGMA, which is an urban growth management area. Um, and then specifically tasking cities with, whether it's Happy Valley, I mean, they have an UGMA that goes over part of what was Damascus or. You guys have an UGMA that's inside of UGB where people need to go to the county and to the city. Um, is not terribly recent, but I don't think existed prior to two thousand and. Two maybe. So it, it's quite possible that this was airport on your, um. Comp plan map, because of course it would be, I mean, there's an airport that exists there. Um, and then at the time that it was be annexed in the city, you guys would develop the airport code. That would be something you would regularly see. It was only this contract with the state that then. Caused us to have this level scrutiny. So I have no doubt that when you adopted the map, you adopted. Um, that designation, it's just possible that regs didn't go with it because the county already had the regs, so why would you?
So, um, this is going, this is taking us back to, uh, whether we want to adopt the county's zoning. Um, so I'm sure that you guys either already have or, or will, but, um, I just want to make sure that. You know, we're not just copying, pasting it into our zone, that we're going through it to make sure that nothing in that. Nothing in their zoning contradicts or goes against anything that we already have in place in the surrounding, you know, the surrounding zones. And I, I, again, I, I, I'm sure that you guys already have it in place. I just wanted to get that, get that out there. I don't want to just. Take over what they, you know, take what they said and do it. I want to make sure that. It's not going to contradict or go against what we already have going on in the surrounding area, the areas surrounding that property.
Yeah, what made that whole debacle a year ago really painfully funny, I guess, was that. The county's overlay doesn't really apply any development standards or restrictions beyond what the federal restrictions are. So basically the federal rule is that like runway, I forget what it's called. It's like a transitional surface. Or imaginary surface or something. There's this calculation for, um, the ratio at which, you know, it's like for every twenty feet. Out, you can go one foot up, something like that, um, for the end of the runway. And so that's why. In that, um, Cascadia Ridge development, there's that huge parcel, if you're familiar with the map that was reserved, you're not allowed to build there. Cause it, it's at the end of the runway.
It's kind of U-shaped. So you have like the wings and then you have all these setbacks and that's, that's the FAA that, that imposes.
Right, and so the county, yeah, the county requires that prohibition on development and no other ones. And so that was the other kind of silly thing about why that blew up into such an ordeal is because the county's overlay doesn't even. Restrict development beyond what is just federally required. Um, and so, yeah, we would still want to look through, because you know, codes reference different parts of themselves and stuff like that. We would want, do that review. And then we would want you all to take a look and check our work and stuff. Um, but yes, as far as I'm aware, the county's overlay would not conflict with anything that we currently have there.
And the state's OAR didn't give them the authority to do that. I mean, that's how this all ended was, it's like point to your authority. You don't have any and there was not an acknowledgement that they didn't have the authority, but then they did not attempt to. Further regulate.
Right.
Um, have we spoken to, like, I think, I believe Sandy's airports near UGB, Hillsborough, Wilsonville. I think, uh, Gene, I think some of those other ones down there also have their airports within their UGB or in the city limits. We spoken to them to see, you know, how they followed for any of their, the county, more specifically would be like Sandy because, you know.
So Sandy doesn't allow people to reside in the hangers. So if you go to your airport, there are actually houses that back up. Like their hangar backs right up to the runway and the house is on the other side. So Sandy. And it's been over a year since I've looked, but I did do a quick little thing. And, um, yeah, there officially, people are not allowed to, to reside in, in the hangar. So that's, that was the one difference that, that I noticed. This was developed as a fly-in, fly-out airport. So the thought would be that houses would be right next to it and people would fly in and fly out.
Yeah, but we would, um, we could do like a, you know, policy code review. Yeah, but we would, um, we could do like a, you know, policy code review. Look at what other cities allow or prohibit. And it'll be important to consider the type of airport too, because the size of the runway means different rules apply to it. The type of, you know, is it privately owned and publicly used? And is it a utility airport or some other kind of public use airport? Is it publicly owned? So, yeah, we'll want to look at what all of those different state rules are related to the type, the specifics of the airport. And then what, you know, what have different cities opted to adopt in addition to those rules because of certain values or things that they want to protect?
Question is, what if they maybe they identify that they might, especially like in our own county, what do they maybe identify that we might want to consider so that we don't get caught up in something later?
Yeah.
Going back to your initial question, so we are, we're, it seems like there's a two-parter here. One, do we want to adopt the counties and, um, what they've got for their plan? And then two, do we want to adopt it as an overlay? I- is that right? And overlay seemed to bring more flexibility. Um, but that flexibility may not be necessarily what we want. That is what I'm hearing here as well too, the flexibility, the, if it sells, to it'll either, either allow it as an airport, oh, or that maybe a developer could come in, if I'm hearing that right, and just turn it all into R1.
Right. Yep, that's right.
And we heard from a couple of folks tonight that they would rather, um, you know, just rather see it as an airport. So that would take away, so if we, if we voted for the overlay, does that automatically allow for someone to come in and turn it into R1?
As if the airport closes, yes.
So unless they have CCNRs. So if I were buying a house with a hangar backing up to, uh, runway, I'm pretty sure I had one in the contract that said that I had beneficial use of, of the runway. I don't know whether that happened or not, but I could easily see it happening. So if they have the CCNRs and they have a private right to basically utilize that, that's probably something we can check.
Yeah. Yeah, we can look into that, but it is, if they don't have those CCNRs, then yeah, it would be vulnerable to, someone could close the airport and it would become just regular R1.
But that's, that's, i- it's owned privately, that's, shouldn't that be their right to do? Yes.
Well, they can, yeah, they can, they can go ahead and close, well, actually technically that grant that I mentioned that they got to pave the runway um, requires them to stay open as a public use utility airport until twenty thirty-six. Um, so they're required, not by us, to stay open until then. But after that, yeah, they can close the airport anytime they want, whether it's zoned airport or not.
So then the question for, for, for us is that overlay portion then? If, so if the overlay is there, does that, that automatically does allow for private sale? And then after that, that grants over, whatever that was, that it, it could turn to R1 at some point?
So really, what, what's most important that we have clarity that in that, whether it's an overlay or not, that in that area, that our low-density R1 will be allowed? Because that's what's allowed under the counties. And so again, this is just, now their low-density and ours might be different, and so it would default to us. But that's what we need to be able to demonstrate to the state, that if another group of houses comes in, that they're able to develop, um, under that R1.
Right. And yeah, so I think there's, there's a question of, do we want it to be, do we want to allow R1 development there? Or do we want to make sure that it stays an airport even after this current airport closes potentially?
Even if we don't do the overlay, if we zone the airport to try to keep it an airport, couldn't they request a zone change?
They can always request a zone change. Yep.
So if they really wanted to close it, they could, it would just be another step?
Yeah.
Jerry. I don't know if I really want to ask this question, but, um, so going back to, you know, it, the property, the property owner's right, or whoever per, you know, purchases that property from the airport, if it closes down, eh, you know, they should have the right to build it the way that they want it. Um, I mean, that's just the way that the law works and, um, I, I just don't, I don't know that we could take that away. But I guess with there being, you know, with them having the right to come in and ask for a zoning change after the fact that kind of, I don't know, I'm, I just confused myself. So let me think about this a little bit more.
It's currently, yeah, it's currently designated in the comp plan map for airport uses. So presumably, we are supposed to, whenever it annexes, we're supposed to then apply airport zoning automatically. So the way that it is now, it seems like it's intended that if they want to be anything other than an airport, they would have to request a zone change, which anyone can always do if they meet the criteria and the council decides that it satisfies any concerns, then they can get that approved. Yeah, it's, it's kind of a, I don't have a recommendation one way or the other.
So I, I can see the concern with, with trying to control people's property. And I, I get the argument of that. And it seems like we'd be prudent to leave it as an airport and then allow them to change it. But the consideration, people are allowed to do with their property within the, within the limits of what the law is set. So meaning that someone can't go buy a property across the street and build a twenty-story building. It doesn't, doesn't work that way. So they are limited within the laws and if our laws say, hey, you can own this, this airport, but it's got to stay an airport, they, they're buying it, understanding that as well. So they, the thing is, that airport has a, a greater need and concern here for people that when, if we have a big fire here or a major disaster, we don't have a lot of evacuation routes, that could be, potentially be a major, a major piece here for planes taking out to fight a fire, a forest fire. Or if we lose bridges because of major earthquake and we can't get out to twenty-four because the bridge is broke and this one broke over here, that could be our only way off, uh, in and out of here. So there's a lot of balance when it comes down to looking at the greater good. And if someone buys it in ten years or after twenty thirty-six and says, hey, I'm buying this knowing that this zoning here is meant for it to be an airport going forward and forever always, or I got to go through a lot of extra steps to get it out of an airport, they're going to buy it knowing that type of information. If they didn't, that's on them front through due diligence. So, um, I get the argument of not overcontrolling somebody, and I'm the first one to, to want to back that up. But there's a balancing I look at, and it's not like they're completely locked and they have a way to change it if they had to.
Yeah, I, I would just agree with that. And I mean, the whole fundamentals of zoning laws are that they're in place for reasons that they all work together for, for a specific public good and people can do what they want within those. And it's already an airport zone in the comprehensive plan. So basically, if we change it to an overlay, we're changing what already exists. And, you know, as, as Joel said, once it's gone, you can't really bring it back. And we don't have a shortage of R1 zones or, or room for housing expansion by any means. And we don't, but we don't have any other airports. So it just kind of seems like a no-brainer to me. Why, why wouldn't we just keep it the way it is in the plan and go forward that way? But.
Yeah, what we could, I'm seeing nodding, what we could do from here is, um, draft up the potential amendments, basically model a zone instead of an overlay, um, model an airport zone according to the county's overlay, which is basically a zone. You know, model our proposed policies according to the county's plan. Bring that back to you all for consideration. You know, we'll look at what some other jurisdictions have done for similar types of airports or if they have, um, different types of airports, kind of indicate like what those differences are and what, um, optional or extra requirements they may be added into their zone. Um, bring those to you all to consider as well. And then at that time, we could, um, resurface this question of the overlay versus the zone, if it's still something that we want to talk through anymore. Um, or if there's more information that you want us to gather on all that.
Check the CCNRs. So it might be completely outside of our control because they might all have private property rights.
Move point. Yeah.
Well, ultimately, it's a hundred percent out of our control because it's Clackamas County property. And unless they want to annex into the city, it doesn't really come to this room.
Right. And yeah, I should also share, we have been getting, um, inquiries and questions. It seems like there's interest in annexing into the city. Um, so we'll see.
So the, I guess the start of this whole conversation was the ground surrounding the airport. Is that right?
Uh, oh, last year, the issue last year was, was an adjacent property that abuts the airport property um, that was for some reason, and there's history on this, but, um, it was still designated in our comp plan map for airport uses. And so they wanted to annex and be zoned R1, low-density residential.
That was the only one of all those properties on that east side?
All the other ones had developed under the county zoning because the airport had not yet signed the agreement with the state. So when the airport signed the agreement with the state, the state then said, you have to have the zoning rules for the airport. So they're no longer under the county's zoning, they're under your zoning, and you don't have code. And so at that point, we were like, our code, because as you state, the airport's surrounded by residential uses and the setbacks are FAA setbacks, they're not the state's, they're not ours, they're not the county's. And so all the, these developments were actually closer in proximity to the runway than this development. It all come into the county zoning and then the state's like, point to where in your zoning you allow residential. So that's how this whole thing came up. So I don't think anyone contemplated a non-residential use for properties that aren't owned by the airport. We just need clarity that that's allowed. Um, and then it makes sense to check and see what limitations are under that. But because of the state designation and because it's in our UGMA, we're going to continue to get, if another application comes in, it's going to come. So sometimes pre, free pavement might not be worth it.
Is, uh, is the overlay going to be generic enough? And I know you mentioned earlier that extending an urban growth boundary is like an act of God and it's the way it's working right now. But there's also a airport to the north of the industrial complex. It's just one property away.
Yeah, so I, what, what's become impossible is a UGB swap. So we take land that might not be buildable inside our urban growth boundary and trade that UGB designation for an area outside. So that's become really difficult. I just think King City's UGB, uh, which was five hundred sixty acres, and it was not something I'd want to do again. But, um, five years later and we're still not done. But yeah, you guys, the great news for you guys, you have plenty of room in your UGB. Um, we can build out, if you have other, um, you know, if you have other uses you'd want on that airport-owned property, or to clarify, they can do something, we could build that into our code. We just need some clarity on the parcels that aren't owned by the airport that they didn't even know they were under this designation necessarily until last January. The weekend of the twenty-eighth, which was my birthday and I was in town. So I got to do all, yeah, so.
So my question was, is the code going to be generic enough that we can utilize it on that? So we don't have to reinvent the wheel again when their growth boundary extends, if it extends?
If it's the same type of, I guess I
Because that's the airport that gets used for firefighting.
Because the, it depends on, we should look at what the, um, county's airport plan has for that airport. Because if it's the same or similar type of public use airport, and you know, depending on like the runway length and the pavement width, although I think that one doesn't have any pavement, yeah.
Are you talking about B brooks?
Yep.
Okay.
There's going to be different requirements and standards for that type of airport based on the states.
So we'll have to relook at it just because it's different in a lot of ways.
But the county already has, that's another one where that's in, the county should already have stuff adopted for that airport if it's public use and probably even if it's just private, I think depending on the type of airport. Then it would be public use, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So probably, once again, we would just look at what the county did and see if we wanted to change at all from that, but.
Okay.
So I think what our next steps for this are, um, are going to be package some recommendations together. We're going to move forward probably with it as a zone, but we can always change things, gather information about what other jurisdictions have done. Um, we'll bring something back before you guys, either at one of your regular meetings or at one of the transportation system plan meetings. Um, and that is because we're proposing to roll this, the adoption of these amendments together with the TSP, the same ordinance, um, just so you don't have to have a whole separate hearings process. It is technically part of the same, um, you know, it's part of the state's transportation planning goal. Um, so we're proposing to just package those together to save time.
Just a quick clarification. So when you, you're talking about packaging, uh, using the county one, are you going to talk on preparing something with the overlay or without the overlay?
Um, it sounds like we want to move forward, creating and keeping our comp plan map designation, creating a zone to go along with it so that it is a more permanent type of thing where if that airport closes, that land is still intended to be airport, unless they come in for a zone change and the council would have to approve it.
Cool, thanks.
Great. Okay, we have gotten through so much great stuff. Thank you, everybody. Um, I want to go back to the list of code issues and, um, priorities on page one. And just time checking, it's eight, it's almost eight thirty. We're doing good.
The amended one or the?
Um, sure, yeah, you can look at the, um, the updated one, which shows updated vote counts.
Mr. Mayor, can I request a short break? Like a five-minute break for everybody?
Good idea. If anybody likes to take fifteen minutes out just to, you know, take care of business.
Okay.
We'll come back and just.
That's great. This workshop, so we'll let Taylor take it away.
Alrighty, and yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else to present at this point, but, um, so I'm sort of turning it over to you all, but I wanted to direct your attention to that list of code issues and priorities. Um, we have already talked about actually numbers one, two, and three. One and two are lumped together in that first point that we talked about needing to, um, reconcile code contradictions with itself and with state requirements. That was the primary issue with our land division criteria, which are not all often clear and objective. Um, then we talked about childcare and daycare facilities, and then all the way down number thirteen, we talked about the airport plan and airport zone code. So I wanted to open it up to you all. We do have this listed in order of the number of like priority votes that some of you submitted. Um, so we could go in order, or if anyone wants to chime in and.
Taylor, which one's the most recent? Is it the one that's in the big packet or the one that said added?
The one that said added is most recent.
I'd like to touch on the, the marijuana issues. That was the odor issue.
That is specifically, yeah, the issue that we've become aware of are odor issues and.
I think there's some facilities where, I work in the industrial park and so I get a lot of feedback from the owners there, different, different companies. There's some of the larger employers in that area that, um, are really discouraged by some of the facilities that aren't operating well. Um, I think there's a couple of facilities down there that do a really good job with containing the smell. And then there's a couple that are like the trailer park of pot shops that are just like full board, doors open. I mean, we have customers come in and many times I've had customers say, you guys got a pot, you guys growing pot in the back, stuff like that, just offhand comments. And I can't imagine that that's encouraging to new companies that come in to look at properties in there. And some of the companies that are existing there are, feel like they're not being heard about the strong odors. And I know there's some things, I've, I haven't looked at the code specifically, but I know some things changed a few years back that, um, gave them a little bit more freedom with the odor, I believe, in like the regulations with the type of filtered systems that they use and stuff like that. So I just wonder if there's something we could do with just enforcement without any new burdens, just enforcing whatever rules are on the books now for the places that aren't handling the smell well. And there's another facility, a very large facility that's up for sale, that's full, fully commercially set up that, just to make sure that if a, a company comes in there, that they're handling the odor correctly. Is, how often, does anyone know how often the OLCC comes down there and regulates?
I don't know.
I mean, I, I doubt that they're doing a lot of regulation. One of the, we talked about this before, we had a pre-meeting meeting. We can make sure that they're actually utilizing their HVACs. Um, we can make sure that they're actually utilizing their HVACs. And I mean, this was all permitted with filtration systems and so it's a question of. You know, making sure that was installed, making sure that's being utilized correctly. Um, and then. So the the thing about smell is we have to have uh, objective criteria like decibels would be for like a noise ordinance. So we need to do a little research to find out what kind of tools out there to measure that. And then once it's out there, we can, that will give us kind of an enforcement hook. But we hear what you're saying and the city's gotten some of that feedback too, as far as people not liking that smell.
In the that code that we have that kind of guides a little bit, do we have either like a strike policy or like some sort of fine policy where. That they're not meeting the requirements and they're basically they're exceeding the smell. Requirements or however you want to put that in there. Um, do we have like a fine we can issue them so basically want them, make them want to come. Comply or like a strike policy where they could lose their license to do it in the city?
We would, well, if they're, if they're not complying and they don't. Um, and so I should asterisk on complying, we currently don't have like a. We don't have an adopted limit on the amount of odor. Right, there's, we don't have that quantified and we haven't figured out what is the sort of legal way of like measuring odor. But we do have requirements for odor control, filtration systems and other. Standards specific to marijuana facilities um, that have to be met and that we can enforce with with code enforcement and so. Um, when co- when the code enforcement officer issues a citation, there's usually a deadline, depending on the type of citation, there's a deadline. Related to that, and if they pass that deadline, that's when we are able to revoke their license. If they operate without a business license, there's a calculation for the amount that they get fined for how. Much time they're operating without that business license and I don't know the details, there's court stuff that happens, I'm not involved in that part, but. Uh, but yeah, there are um, you know, punitive actions that the city can take when they're not complying.
We ha- we haven't ever gotten that far with actually being able to um. Progress along the compliance pathway that far, it's been, uh, it's been a challenge, it's an ongoing challenge, so we. Um, that's a priority, which we would agree that it is. Um, we'd like to see what else we can do to. Read that in.
Other parking requirements for the facilities?
There's parking requirements for any use, so if it's. An industrial use, um, it is, the parking requirements are either based on the. Um, number of employees or it's based on the square footage of the structure. So depending on you calculate it.
There's one, one particular facility down there that has fenced off like a Jimmy rigged gate in front of it, so you can't see into it. And I don't, I, I don't see any parking whatsoever, there's thirty cars parked on both sides of the road. So maybe it's something that could be dealt with with code enforcement with the, without coming uh, reinventing the wheel, just enforcing. The regulations that are already in place and spending a little more time down there, there's people taking bong rips and. I mean, it's, it's like the wild west down there.
Yeah.
You go down there, if you go down there on break time, there's three cars with people smoking pot in them. And you know, cars piled up on both sides, doors kicked open, it's just, it's crazy.
Um, well, I'll share, this is not a code amendment that we're, it doesn't need a code amendment, but something that we're working on is updating our business license application forms. And renewal process to um, to prompt. Us and the applicants to check all of these requirements such as off street parking. When they come in to either renew or apply for the first time for a business license. And that's not something that our current, our forms are old and they're not currently prompting for all of the information that we need in order to make sure that. Minimum off street parking is provided, certain requirements that are specific to. Uh, marijuana or specific to food carts are being met, right? So we're updating our forms, we're just doing that internally this year, so that'll be. That'll fix issues when it comes time for renewals next year. But then in the time being, we're relying on code enforcement for those kinds of things, but yeah. Hopefully that'll help.
We can ask OLCC to come in and take a look. That's certainly something that we could ask for them to do.
Um, kind of along the same lines that we're trying to work here, where um. We need to get the code sorted out, in the meantime, can we just, as a city, write them a letter saying, hey? You have a lot of people complaining about the smell in here, there's some things you can do to fix it, we're gonna be putting codes in place, so might as well get yourself up to par now. Other than, you know, having yourself being a violation later.
Yeah, we do, um, we are in the middle of addressing two code enforcement. Um, tickets or you know, um, instance, actions for a couple of um, odor complaints in the industrial park. And so um, one of those has been an easy fix, they didn't have the equipment in place and they're installing it. And they submitted the plans according to what's required in our code and that's great, the other one, we'll see. We're less far along on the other one. Um, but yeah, it's something that we're um, we are able to enforce. Parts of the code requirements that we have now, but there are some specific like teeth. That we're missing from our code that would allow us to, for example, go in and require them to allow us an in- an inspection. Or that would require yearly inspections before business license issuance, stuff like that, that I think would help us. Actually be able to make sure that the code's being met.
Yeah, and I get that, you know, we have to fix the code, but can we just write them a letter, basically it says, hey, you know. That occurs, can you fix the problem before it becomes a bigger problem for you?
Right, the, no, I'm saying they received code enforcement letters, so yeah, they're, they're working on it.
Checking on, on the uh, the list that you gave us here, you've given this list of twenty three items um, prioritized down through sixteen. Uh, what, what is the intent of this? Is this your charge for the next? So many years or year, what do you, what are we looking for here tonight?
That if one of the priorities that we had. Identified based on your votes shouldn't be a priority and there's something else that maybe didn't get the votes because people hadn't thought about it. That you guys would say, hey, we don't, we don't want you to, like, don't spend the time on the childcare, spend the time. On the storage standards, you know, um, so if, if, this is what we thought based on the votes. The marijuana one is already underway. Um, and then if there's something further down the list that that should be further up or something that we identified that you don't think should be. That to let us know so that we can make that a priority.
One of them that stands out to me, number nine on here, annexation approval process and criteria, um, does that, would that? Kind of go in with number two up there or even number one?
It already, it definitely should, yeah.
But because we've talked about as, as separate groups, um, the planning and city council about, you know, ways to maybe get in front of some of the growth. That's happening and I want to make sure that's, that's a uh, priority here as well too, I'm glad to see it's in the top ten. Um, seems like it would be one bumped up higher.
Yeah, I think it would be wise and. Not that much extra time to include that in the, you know, reconciling code contradictions, checking it with state requirements. One of the things that's come up about annexations is um, some jurisdictions don't. Park their annexation. Criteria and standards in their development code. So for us, it is in the development code, so they are treated by the state and by us as a land use decision and so there's all, there are. Procedure, procedural and legal implications of that, um. Probably some benefits and probably some drawbacks and so we could look at, well, what other jurisdictions don't treat them like land use decisions? Procedurally legally, um, what could it look like if we parked them somewhere else in our code? Um, are there things that we are currently um, requiring that we don't want to? That we'd be allowed to take out or things that we want to require that we, we would be allowed to if it wasn't a land use decision? So some investigation we could do there.
Uh, one of the things I'd like to see if we can get some more attention to is the tree planting requirements and the protection of certain existing trees. Mainly because the longer that goes without being a um, addressed, more trees are gonna be either not planted or taken out. We're gonna be, gonna lose those, we can't get back, large trees in development areas, once they're taken out, they don't come back around. So having something we can do to address some of that, so we don't lose the look of Esticada, which is. Timber town, we don't want to lose that. So putting that somewhere higher up so we can discuss it, get something in our codes or as building going forward happens. We can protect that.
Yeah, Alan was having the same idea as me as you were um, describing that, which was, I was thinking, okay. Is that something that we could also include in some of the updates, especially for our land division? Um, criteria, we will have to, there'll be some research involved, things have to be clear and objective for residential development. Um, but like I said, clear and objective doesn't necessarily mean it has to be easy. Um, so as long as it's clear and objective, then that's. Great, um.
What, can I speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
As, as a builder develops land periodically, uh, those tree requirements in certain jurisdictions. That are like, like Oswego, West Lynn can be rather cumbersome, expensive. And prohibitive to development, um. While Lake Oswego is very pretty when you drive through it, it's also very expensive, so. We got to weigh the. Bottom end of the spectrum because we aren't like Oswego, um, and I love trees too, but. When trees are in the middle of a development, sometimes there's no other option than get rid of them. Uh, and especially if everything around them is developed, those trees aren't gonna live, they're gonna be hazardous later on, so. Um, my personal preference for people building houses is always remove the trees before you build your house because they'll likely be on your house at some point in time, so. There, there is some logic to it, to the street trees, there's a lot of street trees that can be planted. Uh, that are good for sidewalks and curbs and all those things, uh, and don't cause the damage like we see it. Periodically throughout the city, so I think it's a two parter, um, I would just encourage us not to get too stringent because it's gonna. Be expensive. And, and I, I get Ben's position on there and while I, I understand it's probably expensive. I'm not working for the developer, I'm working for the people of Esticada, they want Esticada protected the way it is. The ones who brought it forward to me, and that's why I brought it forward. Esticada, it's one of the things that if you don't protect it now, it's gone later, may cost the developer more money, that's something they have to deal with, not us. But the um, the, the big part is, is we need to think about the people Esticada want, they don't want their town disappearing and looking like Happy Valley or something like that, they want. Esticada State, Esticada, trees matter, we're lumber town, that matters to them, that's why I was brought up in the first place. Now, we can try to find some sort of middle ground between that, I get that, but I think it's, it's actually a critical thing to consider.
Dealing with permitting in a lot of the different jurisdictions, um, there are certain places where we won't even go and deal with like Multnomah County. We just won't build there, we won't deal with our permitting department. So I'd say if, if we're gonna put some extra burden on developers. It would be good to find something that we can compromise or, or make easier, one of the, the nice things about Esticada. Is the permitting process is very streamlined, it doesn't have a lot of the burdens that Multnomah County or Happy Valley do. Um, where we would charge someone a thousand dollars to do permitting in Clackamas County. We would charge them ten thousand dollars when we would do it in Multnomah County. And that was just for a certain number of hours because it would always run over that, so just long as it's not. It, it is an important thing and I love trees too and, and I, I get what you're saying about that and if. There's a way to keep a certain number of them in large developments that um, keep the appearance, as long as it's not, you have to get. Another environmental study or um, arbrists coming out and deciding which ones and, and adding a huge cost burden. And adding to the timeline of getting permits and becoming prohibitive. It's, it's like, well, Multnomah County didn't become that way overnight, it was one thing at a time that just got added on and added on and added on. And yeah, we're not the developers and we're representing the people, but um, you just don't want it to become prohibitive to be able to build and I think that. I'm, I'm all for street trees and keeping as many of the good ones as we can, as long as the process isn't very uh, cumbersome and expensive. Um, to the point where it discourages development in places where we want to have it.
Yeah, I agree completely, um, that we don't want to go too far, I'm not saying swing too far to one side, but a good example, we, some of the things that Sandy's put in place, it's been able to. People can still build there, they build there a lot, but yet they still protect a lot of those trees in the process. They go a little too far in some areas where homeowners can't even remove, remove their own trees. I think that should be up to the homeowner in some cases, but I think as far as getting a development piece on it, on it and look what they have on there is a good. Good example to look at, so.
So, um, myself being part of the. My house was built in ninety six and there was a tree that was already there that was left about seven years ago, that tree fell. And if that tree would have fallen, you know, that, if that tree would have fallen, you know. Five feet the other direction, you know, it would have, it would have taken out a good chunk of my house. Um, so I mean, just looking at that aspect, I understand what Ben's saying is, uh, you know. Picking, you know, leaving a tree here, leaving a tree there could result in problems in the future because they're disrupting that, they're disrupting the ground. In the building process, they're disrupting the root system in the building process of that tree and then like. The tree that we had in our front yard that fell um, during that process of, of, of building and everything. Um, the root system didn't have it, 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 it took away a good chunk of that root system and then that tree ended up coming down. You know, a few, you know, a few years later, so I get, I get that, um, I think that, you know. Street trees, street trees are great, but um, you know, just the, what you're, what you're doing, what the builders are doing to the property. Or doing to the ground where those trees have lived, um, it, it really can. Create future da- future problems for the homeowner, so um. Kind of on the same boat we're bent, so.
Yes, uh, this comes up a lot in planning stuff where um, any things that are suggested are talked about as being. Um, or any fees or whatever it is as being. Really burdensome to developers, which, which I get and of course, we don't want to, it, it, we should keep our streamlined process and all that, but. There's also a lot of houses going in around here that are built relatively inexpensively on really tiny lots. And going for like five and six hundred thousand dollars and it's, it's hard in these conversations to be like. Oh gosh, it looks like a, you know, having to plant a tree would really. Take this thing over the top and it wouldn't be possible, it'd be great to actually see some numbers like what. What are the profit margins on these things that, that we're supposed to be making decisions based on preserving these profit margins, what are they right now? On, on building in Esticada roughly, you know, in, in different, a few different neighborhoods and like, what is the cost of a tree or a cost of. Adding X number of parking spaces or whatever it is that we're considering it, this is just a comment, not like. That, you know, I, I need that information to talk about trees, but just in general, it would be really great to have some numbers attached to some of those statements.
Well, I think that's, Jerry, do you have something? Okay, I want to add one in that I think is pretty important here because we're seeing a lot of it right now. And that's the unlawful camping and the derelict houses. That I've already seen three or four houses go completely belly up, sitting there rotting on their foundations. And we've had numerous camps down at the riverfront, uh, that I personally have walked up on and had to move, you know, help move along. Um, and they're not being used, they're abandoned camps, they come in, they use them one night and they're gone. Um, so it's a whole different area, but I think we gotta get ahead of that with this particular one that you have on here. Um, so that we don't have a bigger problem coming down the road. Um, so that would be my, my preference on this one is that we bump it up only because it's becoming more of a problem now.
So we can, we can, there are definitely things we can do, we need to be really careful about how we talk about this. Um, and so I just, um, we, we, anything we do needs to be based in health and safety and that sounds exactly how you guys are approaching this. From a health and safety standpoint, there's some, there's some cities that um. Have done good things with abandoned and derelict buildings, Astoria is one of those. If you visited Astoria ten years ago and then visited recently, all of those vacant abandoned buildings have been. Fixed up and, and that was due to code based, fine based uh, approach they use. Um, you know, that's something that was legally challenged and scrutinized and, and I'll help. So there, there are different things we can do around these issues. Again, we just need to be really careful about how we talk about it because it needs to all be based on, on health and safety.
Both the subjects or just one, one in particular or both?
Um, camping specifically, um, wish that Grant's past had been a little bit more careful when they were discussing camping. So um, again, if, if everything.
So um, again, if, if everything is based on health and safety around the issue of camping. We're probably going to be in pretty good shape, I, I would actually separate those, um, uh, derelict housing is different. Um, and, and we need to, the code that we need to do on that is, it would be different than how we would do. A code, code around temporary unpermitted structures is what I would refer to, we're concerned about with camping, so. Somebody building something that's outside of the uniform building code. That is a shelter, um, creates fire and other hazards that other jurisdictions are seeing.
A couple of things, kind of, you know, you split them there, but um, one is on the derelict housing side. Can we get the fire marshal involved in this as well a little bit because they have. Rules and things that can apply from the fire side, they might be able to help us with some of those that may have fallen out of fire code. Um, so that's one way to approach it, I think, and then as far as the uh, the camping side of things, I know there's House Bill three one one five or three one, I always get the number mixed up. But a lot of people get scared by that, I, I, I know that obviously we have an attorney here, but I've, I've read that thing a thousand times and I've been researched it, had to report on it a while back. But the key thing in that one is we have three things we're required, uh, which by the way, not in our code, we need to update that. Um, is one, if we um want to move someone along from the property, we have to give them a twenty-four hour notice. Uh, written notice has to be posted, second part is the, if we remove their stuff at the store for thirty days. Um, and third one is if we, someone is actively in the location, we have to. Um, be able to send them to a facility or direct them to a facility that's within reasonable distance, twenty, uh, twenty miles is normally or along a bus line. We have a public bus line, so that gives us a lot more options, so. Those are the three requirements based upon the first line, if you read it, tell us, send you to other ordinances interstate, three one one five, we'll. Look through it anyways, but those are the three things, we do need to update our code to say that because it doesn't actually say that in our code. And we need to reference those, um, but uh, those are the three things when it comes down to, otherwise, we can actually have. Camping laws that say that you can't camp on public property, um, and as long as you meet those three requirements within. The, the legal limits from, from what I've read and studied on, and Peter, I'd love to hear your feedback on that as well.
Well, in every other instance where it's been a reasonable person standard and that's the standard in the building to be reasonable. Those have all been struck down as unconstitutionally vague, so that's why like our noise ordinance is decimals. Because decimals are a clear and objective standard, so I like to think of myself as a reasonable person. I have no idea what a judge would say the reasonable standard is, so I, I think that. The way that I've read all of these is, um, they apply to established campgrounds. I'm not aware of any established campgrounds in the city of Estacada. Um, and you know, again, it all comes down to health and safety, so if you've talked to a Portland firefighter. And her or even read the Willamette Week, uh, people being in particle board shelters. A, I think gives you um. An issue if you want to do enforcement under the state's building code, but B, those, that's not safe. And when those things catch on fire, people die. So I, I think again that. And I actually co-taught a continuing legal education course with the, then head of the ACLU on this and he didn't disagree with anything I said. Um. Our state uniform building codes exist for a reason, it's not to make development more expensive, it's to keep people safe. And so if we're allowing people to use something that doesn't meet those standards, in my mind, what we're saying is. Um. We care about you less than we care about someone who lives in their own home. Um, because why would we say they don't have to meet those sort of standards? And so that, that really gives me a lot of pause, and I think when you look at it through that lens. Um, it, it makes it very clear to me that the thing we should be doing is not criminalizing sleeping. But making sure that to the extent that people are going to sleep outside of a house that's done safely, and that doesn't mean. You know, tents on pallets, that doesn't mean uh some sort of particle board structure that's gonna. Catch on fire when there's stoves on, it doesn't mean blue tarps, because those are flammable too and people will lose their lives. So if we're doing that sort of regulation, I'm pretty comfortable with it. I, and I, I think, I really think it's the best practice, uh, just like we don't want people blocking sidewalks, because if someone. Has a wheelchair and they have to go, and this is a point I also made when I was teaching this course. If someone has to go into the street because the sidewalk's blocked by, you know, something that looks like a yurt. Then, and they get hit, then get, we could be liable. And, and you know, it needs to be safe for everybody and that's had the house and that's the houseless and um, making sure that we're. Doing stuff based on health and safety and that we're being compassionate. And you know, if we build it around that and I think there are ways to do it, it can meet a lot of people's needs.
Makes sense.
Now, on the derelict housing component of that, is that getting more into like foreclosure on houses and, and people not keeping up? Houses that are bona fide. Houses?
I mean, I haven't.
Can I say that?
I haven't seen a, I haven't seen a derelict house this year in about five years, but maybe it's just because they haven't hit my desk.
Yeah, I don't know, I, this one came from code enforcement, I think. If it didn't come from you, then it would have come from code enforcement as we were compiling this list.
It sounds like we need a little bit more information on exactly what issues, because. If you've been on Zillow and seen what houses are going for in Estacada right now, it doesn't make sense to have one of them like vacant and derelict.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm talking about abandoned, I'm not talking about, right, there, not making a fort, there's just nobody there and they just.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah.
Totally different game, alright.
There's a few amount of people who prefer to fall in that category.
Well, next on the list, anybody else, any other of these priorities that are on here that they want to talk about tonight? No, I think we uh.
Great.
Well, what about parks and uh proportional part of them?
I actually, yeah, I agree.
That's the third one on the list, we just glaze right over it.
Yeah, and this one could um, could also potentially get rolled into the land division changes, it's, it would be. Imposed on land divisions, um. We currently don't have any. Park space requirements for residential land divisions. Um, our code says developers are encouraged but not required to provide park space. Um, so yeah, do we want to require either? You know, maybe a developer, maybe a development is so small that it doesn't make sense to require them to create a park area. Um, but maybe it would make sense to have them contribute to, you know, a fee in lieu. That goes into uh the city's park fund that would get used on park projects. Um, something like that to make sure that as these developments are happening. We are ensuring that park space is getting provided somewhere. Um, so that we don't have all of this land getting developed and the nearest park is a, a long way away, where are those kids going to go play?
I like the idea, if we're gonna do it, if I have to choose between a developer doing it and. Uh, municipality doing it, we're gonna get a lot more bang for our buck. Out of a private company uh developing a park area as opposed to when the city gets involved, it price triples, quadruples. So.
So, um, I really like what our Parks and Rec um commission, committee or is doing, trying to do with uh, you know, connecting all of the neighborhoods. Um, through walking paths, biking paths, however, I, you know, however it's done, and I, I'd like to see that um be a requirement. Um, you know, in future developments that they're, that they, you know, that. We keep that in mind, that we're trying to connect the city, you know, connect the city so you could walk, walk or bike throughout the, you know, from one end of the city to the other without. You know, too much issue, I'd like to keep that, um. Brian?
I just, this one's near and dear to, to myself as well, um, just from the school district's perspective, as we know, we're a growing community capacity. Uh, we've exceeded our limits when it comes to uh athletic playing facilities and uh for those of you who are unaware, it's the school district. Who, who really absorbs the entire responsibility of housing all youth athletics uh for this community, however, the part, the city has been a great partner as we've cultivated the back twenty acres. And already in its first fall, it housed three football team practices and three soccer team practices. And we're already realizing that we're probably two or three baseball fields short for this coming spring. Uh, based on the numbers that are coming out just with the age group of kids, and so. I would recommend strongly, my, my strongest urgents uh among this group is if we are to, to um, to. Cement some type of language around parks that, I mean, I think, I think anyone can walk two or three blocks and find a swing. I think, or a slide, uh, I think we really need to have a more of a conversation about how we can help the capacity of. Of a growing community when it comes to athletic fields and, and participation.
I think we're all in agreement on.
Yeah.
I could definitely see the need for that, some big event area where we can actually have an update. So that definitely makes sense, anybody else want to comment on that?
So on, I, I guess, just to continue with what Ryan was saying, um, you know, about, I, I'd probably say about twelve years ago, um, uh, former. Well, I guess he's, he's still here, he's still with us, but uh Danny Scott um put together a uh, a big. Proposal, a big thing, had a lot of the, um, there was a, a lot of the stuff was already um put in place to put in like a sports complex. And uh, you know, maybe, I think that land has been re, you know, already used up, but you know, maybe revisiting that plan, trying to find that. Um, you know, and, and looking at that and looking at the funding that, you know, was proposed at that point might be something that we look, look towards.
The other thing we could do is we could give developers S T C credits. In exchange for building these things, so that's something that worked really well in West Lynn, if you're familiar with the Cascade Summit. Um, they got a whole lot of S T C credits, then future developers bought the credits from the developers for. Between eighty and ninety cents on the dollar, so um, there was a period where the city didn't get necessarily. Those credits, but they had gotten the infrastructure bill, um, and not at the rates that the city would. Need to build things on, so it was savings to the city and savings to the current and future developers, that's, that's the sort of program we could look at.
So any more hands, so?
So what we can do, if I get enough nods, um, we could include some preliminary proposed language around that. In the language that we come back with for that general um code, code reconciliation, land division amendments. Um, if that sounds good to everyone, and if we need to open it up, separate it into its own process, we can do that. If the need arises, but.
I think everybody's in agreement, so it's good.
Thank you all so much for your really good, helpful, thoughtful input. I'm, I'm very appreciative of that.
I thank staff for putting this together, it was uh very nice and very well attended, and you're all here and you're making big decisions on the future of your city. So that said, I think all of you are doing a great job and I'm glad you could all make it tonight. And uh, hope to see you again real soon, especially Ryan, it's good to see you. But that said, this meeting is adjourned.